Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. Would everybody please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ms. Corporal, would you please call roll?
Mr. Kezak?
Here.
Ms. Hannah?
Here.
Ms. Kane?
Here.
Ms. Strauss?
Here.
Also in attendance tonight is Township Manager Ms. Tuli Coles, Assistant Township Manager Mr. Valla, Township Solicitor Mr. Esposito, Township Engineer Mr. Kessler, Chief of Police Joseph Bartolali, Bartolali, sorry, my gosh, Director of Building and Zoning Jim Ennis, Director of Parks and Rec Paul Capera, Director of Finance Laura Hucklebridge, and Director of Public Works Eric Galdermeyer.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Our next Board of Supervisors meeting will be Monday, April 7th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Next on the agenda, we have several special items. The first tonight is swearing in of our new police officer, Corey Miller. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Kezak, and fellow board members here tonight to introduce and have ceremonially sworn in our newest Middletown Township Police Officer, Corey Miller. Before his swearing in, I'm going to read a brief biography of Corey. Corey Miller grew up in Bucks County and graduated from Bucks County Technical High School. He has 15 years of prior law enforcement experience with the Philadelphia Police Department. He is a loving husband and a father of a three-year-old daughter. On his days off, he enjoys spending time with his family and his dog. He's looking forward to being a part of the Middletown Township Police Department and serving our wonderful community and the citizens of our township. So with that, I'm going to ask Corey to step up to the dais for Mr. Kezak to swear him in, and if you'd like, your wife can join you up there, Corey.
Constitutional Bible?
Thanks.
Hand that to you.
Aye, Corey Miller. Solemnly swear. To support, defend, to support, to support, defend, and obey.
The U.S. Constitution?
The U.S. Constitution.
The Constitution and laws of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution and laws of Pennsylvania. And the ordinances of Middletown Township. With duty, honor, and fidelity. As a Middletown Township Police Officer. Thanks, sir.
Good job. Thank you, Mr. Kezak.
Thank you, Chief Bararilla. Next on the agenda, we have recognition of Tom McCool's retirement. Mr. Ennis?
Good evening. It's a real honor to be up here.
Just real quick, just wait a second, let folks get an opportunity to circle out of here. Okay, great, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Ennis.
Sure. Good evening, and it's a real honor to be up here tonight to get the mention to this board, members of the audience, as well as anyone that's viewing this meeting, about the invaluable role that Tom played for the protection of this township's health, safety, and welfare. For over his years of service, Tom reviewed and inspected thousands upon thousands, not over-exaggerating, construction projects in Middletown Township. So that means that he protected the safety of thousands upon thousands of residents, community members, business owners, as well as other people within the community, their safety, and it's just, I can't even begin to describe the one-man band that he was for so long with all the projects. There's someone that are sitting in their home right now, completely oblivious, that their house isn't falling down, isn't on fire, isn't flooded, and whatever calamity is playing out there right now because of Tom's protection. Did I mention that he has great wit? And that's also what he used quite often, because he was the bearer of bad news. He often had to tell people no, and he also had to explain to them why he was telling them no. And something that property owners and also contractors don't want to hear. But he did it in such a professional manner with humility, care, conscientiousness, and just his candor and his amazing ability to diffuse a situation and make sure that it never escalated into, you know, just into a problem. In fact, it was always funny to me whenever someone actually tried to say something bad about Tom. It didn't happen often, but they would try to say that it was unfair, and then you dig a little deeper, and you find out, no, it was the other person that was always the problem. Anyone that knows Tom, he was always fair, he was always conscientious, he was always caring. So with that, and I just, I'm so glad that you're here. He wasn't supposed to be here tonight, so, and his wife's here, too. So with that, I just really wish him well in his retirement. It's well-earned and well-deserved.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis. Ms. Tuli Coles, would you like to say?
I just would like to add just a small little addition to what Jim said. A hundred percent, Tom has been the person who has been really maintaining health, safety, and welfare. But for anyone who knows Tom, he is one, you know, beyond all the work that he does and how diligent, 17 years of dedicated service, he's one of the most incredible human beings you will ever meet. He always has a smile on his face. He always brings positive energy. He has changed the culture of our organization by being the human being that he is. I'm so happy to see that you're a little tan from your vacation, and we wish you the best. We miss you tremendously. Never will fill your shoes, but best of luck to you.
Thanks so much, Ms. Tuli Coles. Thanks so much, Mr. Ennis. And Tom, I'll echo those sentiments. I'm not going to make you stand here any longer, but it's true. You can't underestimate the value, and it's a tremendous loss to not have you here anymore. I will say, I knew of you before I knew you. I mean, you're a legend around here, and I don't think I ever heard any negative feedback ever from whether it was residents, developers, contractors. I mean, you are just known far and wide as being just a fair and decent person, and we can't thank you enough for your dedication to this township over these many years. We wish you all the best in retirement. We hope you enjoy yourself. All right. Next on the agenda, we have a proclamation for Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Ms. Hannah?
Thank you. Proclamation recognizing National Developmental Disabilities Month in Middletown Township. Whereas National Developmental Disabilities Month is observed in March each year, intellectual and developmental disabilities, IDDs, are disorders that are usually present at birth and that negatively affect the trajectory of an individual's physical, intellectual, and/or emotional development. And whereas people with developmental disabilities are of all racial, ethnic, educational, social, and economic backgrounds, and all are valued members of society who will find fulfillment in living everyday lives, and whereas the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors value what is important to people with disabilities and their families who are striving for everyday lives, no different than that of all other citizens. And whereas in 2020, the Board of Supervisors established the Human Relations Commission to address discrimination in the township, and whereas the Human Relations Commission is dedicated to promoting the value of diversity and addressing discrimination based on age, race, color, gender, identity, religion, creed, culture, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, ancestry, national origin, and mental or physical disability. And now be it therefore resolved that the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors proclaims March as National, National, oh, my word, National Developmental Disabilities Month.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. All right. We have one announcement tonight, and that is the Park and Recreation Department Comprehensive Plan. For those that don't know already, the Middletown Park and Rec Department is seeking public feedback as part of the Comprehensive Parks, Recreation, Open Space, Greenways, and Trails Plan. There will be a public meeting on Thursday, March 27th, at 7:00 PM, and there's a public survey that residents can take part in to help plan for the future of Middletown's park system. Information for the public meeting and the survey can be found on our website, www.middletownbucks.org/cprosgt. Your feedback is really greatly appreciated. So if you haven't already, please go to the website and provide your feedback so that you can have a voice in Middletown's park system. Thanks very much. And that brings us to the Consent Agenda Items, and those are as follows. Item A, Consideration of Authorizing Payment of March 10th, 2025 Bills List in the Amount of $1,496,322.88. B, Consideration of Approving the February 18th, 2025 Minutes of the Public Meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors, and Special Meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors on March 3rd, 2025. C, Consideration of Approving Financial Security Release Number Two for All Site Items Completed to Date for Stone Farm S/LD Number 15-8 in the Amount of $2,721,304. And Item D, Consideration of Appointing Joseph Bagley as Hearing Officer for the Police Tenure Act Hearing. Is there a motion on the Consent Agenda Items?
I'll make a motion to approve all Consent Agenda Items as read.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion on a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. Next on the agenda, Consideration of Amendment of Land Development for the Field House at the Nishamini High School Sports Complex. Yes, sir?
Yes. Hello, my name is Hugh Kazo. I'm a landscape architect with the LA Sport LA Group. We're before you tonight for a recommendation for a conditional approval for the, an amendment to the land development plan for the Nishamini Athletic Project that is actually mostly complete for the high school. As part of that project, originally there was a much larger field house proposed for the project and was bid about the same time the work was being done. Okay, up here is the good Google map. Work was being done concurrently with the athletic facility. At the time that when the bids came in, the prices were a little bit too high. There's some existing conditions out there on the campus primarily where you see the existing concession stand and existing ticket booth and two gray buildings where those cars are parked. Most of the main utilities come into the school there, and that was one of the reasons why the cost was so high for the field house. So the work stopped at a certain point there to allow the district an opportunity to take a look at options that they would have for a new field house. So, next slide, please. What you have, this is a comparison sketch. On your left was the original field house plan, showed basically two sections with a large entry gate, had team rooms, had bathrooms, had concession stands, had also like ref, referee rooms and trainer rooms. Large concrete plaza, work was being done out in the front of it between the existing stone parking. It was a new grass area. What you see on the right is what the reduced version of the field house is. This is actually a prefab field house, a concrete cast field house. The plaza is smaller, the ADA parking is being placed in similar to what was originally being proposed. Also during the construction of the school, there were two things that were changed essentially on the fly, where originally the high school was to have six lanes of the running track. There were two lanes at it, which that having eight lanes total makes it enable, enables it to be used for districts. And the original concrete grandstands that were there for years were removed, replaced with brand-new grandstands. So those are also actually for this revised land development plan, they also memorialized those two improvements that were done during the construction. Next slide, please. And this is, this is essentially just showing, you know, these are plans from the, from the current set. This is what we call Exhibit A, which is the same as the prior sketch. And the next slide, please. And this is kind of a detailed grading plan, but there's, existing stormwater is already out there, so we have, we're redesigning some of the stormwater to connect to the existing stormwater that is out there. Comments were received from the township engineer, township engineers were minimal, mostly just making some minor corrections on the plans. The county planning commission had a comment about building height. We were able, we also did extend the NPDES permit, which was technically to expire in December, as were all NPDES permits at that time. So we extended it, so it has that in hand. So that's basically quickly in a nutshell for just where we are, why we're here tonight.
Thank you. And so no new, no variances and no new waivers being requested? Am I understanding, Mr. Kessler, this was approved or recommended for approval by the planning commission?
It was, yes, at their March 5th meeting. And you're correct, no new waivers from the original plans that were before you before.
Any questions from any board members? If not, I can accept a motion.
I make a motion to grant amended preliminary final land development approval for the Nishamini High School Athletic Facility renovations, 2001 Old Lincoln Highway, SLD Number 21-08, with the following conditions. Number one, applicant shall comply in full with all requirements of Middletown Township subdivision and land development ordinance and Middletown Township zoning ordinance unless relief was granted by the body having jurisdiction. Number two, all comments still outstanding and review letters shall be fully addressed for plans to be considered final.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. There's been a motion on the second. Any board questions at this time? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Presentation of the George School's Conceptual Master Plan. Mr. Murphy?
Evening. I'm here tonight on behalf of the George School to make a brief presentation about what we're referring to as a master plan for the vision of George School over the next 20 to 30 years. Over the last couple of years, the Board of Trustees had a series of visioning sessions to think about what George School is going to look like in 2050 or beyond, and what has developed from that is a master plan that does just that. It is broken up into a series of phases, and Robert Kleimanhagen, who is the Director of the Physical Plant, is going to give the board a brief overview tonight as to what the principal elements of that master plan is. It is expected that, and we've already met with the staff, the staff has determined that each individual phase, as it's going to be presented, constitutes a land development plan. So you're going to see over the years multiple appearances before the team to seek individual land development approval for each phase. The idea, however, would be upfront, much as we did with the St. Mary Campus across from the hospital, is hopefully develop with the staff a master plan agreement that would give confidence to George School as they individually engineered each phase without having the fear of something changing zoning-wise or something else that would frustrate them down the road. So with that as background, we're here tonight to have Bob sort of run you through the individual phases. I would say that the first several phases that Bob's going to describe are funded, and you'll be seeing land development plans probably this year, if not sooner, in the year reflecting those. But some of the later phases that are more ambitious are not fully funded. But the idea is to give everybody a sense of what is going on. When we were at the planning commission, someone asked a question, is this mean an increase in the number of students? The answer to that is no. These changes that you're going to see are designed to better improve both the student-on-campus experience as well as the day students as well, together with faculty. A lot of the improvements are to buildings, facilities that are aging, and improving the quality of the life of those that live and work and go to school there. So it's not intended to create opportunity for more students to attend right now. So with that as background, I'll let Bob sort of run you through the master plan.
Great. Thank you, Ed. Robert Kleimanhagen, Director of the Physical Plant Department at George School. As Ed mentioned, we started on a master plan back in 2022. It was the first master plan that we have done on campus in a 20-year period. That master plan looked at three core areas for us on campus, our academic, our community areas, and our residential areas. What you have in front of you is the concept overview plan of a number of projects that we see happening in the next, we'll say, two to three years, and then probably four to eight, then 10 to 15 and 20. The first project that's on the sheet that we provided to you is an expansion of our lobby and restroom renovations for our Walton Performing Arts Center. We're looking to do an addition on that, on that building that would hopefully start by the end of the year. We are in design on that now. The second phase, which would be part of a donor gift that we're fortunate enough to get over the last several months, would be to add four single-family homes on campus. That would be on the north part of our campus within the township. The third project is a connector building between two of our academic buildings. That's our Bancroft Hall and our Spruance Alden Science Center. That would be a connector as well as a full renovation of both buildings. The Bancroft Building is close to 75 years old. It is not air-conditioned. We have a lot of needs to really bring our academic spaces up to 21st century standards for teaching and learning. Outside of the master plan for those first three projects, the next academic one would actually be a building replacement. We have a building on campus called our Hollowell Building that houses our visual arts, its ceramics, photography, as well as some wood shops. That building would be replaced in the years to come, and that would probably end up being about a 30,000 to 45,000 square foot building. Following that, we would look at a Student Union Campus Dining Hall Building on campus as well. And last but not least, would be relocation because of that campus community center and dining hall. We would move all of the maintenance facilities really to the back of the house off of our north loop on campus. So it's a robust and very aggressive master plan. The board is very supportive. They're looking for collaborative efforts with the township, all your staff. We've had numerous meetings on that, and I've been charged with being able to take George School into the next 25 to 50 years. So it's an exciting opportunity. I want to echo what Ed said. We have 540 students at George School. We're looking to still stay at about 150 to 160 faculty. So we're not growing as a community, but the spaces themselves need to be rehabbed and refreshed. So I'll pause there, and I'll stop for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
You mentioned not changing the number of students. Is there a plan to change the proportion of boarding and day, or that's going to stay the same as well?
Good question. Part of the master plan was specifically outlining that we would remain at the 540 students. We have always targeted for a 55% boarding and 45% day student. We are a little lower on that coming out of the pandemic.
Lower on the boarding?
Lower on the boarding. We're about 48 to 52, and the goal is to get that back up. And we really saw a little bit more of the day student population come during the pandemic, but through our admission office and our short and long-term strategic plan, I think we can get back to, but no more than 55%.
Do you have an expectation of when you think the first land development project would be coming before this board for consideration?
I would think that the Walton project would be with you in probably the next two, two months.
One more question. Is there an expectation of any, like, major increase in impervious, or is it largely a sort of swap?
More swap.
Okay.
Not an increase.
Any of the projects, I know we're talking long-term, but do you anticipate any of them causing major disruption to area roadways or causing traffic?
They're all within the heart of the campus. If anything, it's more of a disruption to our day-to-day students and faculty and community, and that's really the challenge that we have now is the logistics of being able to do. The Walton Center is literally right in the heart of the campus. So being able to have school going on throughout the school year and keep the auditorium open is a challenge. So I do not see a real impact at all out on the main road at all.
Thank you. Any other questions? I think we're good. Appreciate your time.
Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. All right. Next on the agenda, Consideration of Authorizing a Contract with Armour &amp; Sons of Langhorne, Pennsylvania for the Installation of Musco LED retrofit lights at Community Park and Authorizing the Purchase of Musco Lighting Retrofits for the 10 fields at Middletown Community Park. Mr. Capera?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members. The Park and Rec Department is asking the board permission to proceed with a very exciting lighting project at Community Park. Once these 10 fields are converted to the state-of-the-art LED lighting system from Musco, the Park and Rec Department will enhance the already good bones of Community Park for the next generation of families in our community who enjoy recreating outdoors, reduce the annual operating cost of the Park and Rec Department, and make a significant reduction in the township's carbon footprint, which is a goal of the Township's Climate Action Plan, which was adopted in 2021. I have a PowerPoint to show the scope of the work for the board. And, there we go. So when we say 10, there we go. When we say 10 fields, okay, we're talking about the, is this me or you? Okay. All right, I'll stop. We're talking about the, the four fields in the quad, the skate park, the four soccer fields, and the large baseball field in the northeast corner of the park. Okay? The, when we drill in, okay. So when we talk about fields, it's basically, think of a field as a rectangle, and there are four poles with each one. I don't know if I can highlight it, but the, the field, okay, here we go, the full pole. So we have the headlights, we have the lights up there. They call that was the rabbit ears, and then there's a wire that runs down the pole, and it connects to a Musco box there. The top light is being taken away, the wiring and the hollow is going to be taken away, and then there's going to be a new LED lighting system, new harness connecting to a new Musco box with all new hardware. So basically, what that's going to do is give us basically a brand-new light with a 25-year warranty. All the work occurs at the poles, and there's 38 poles over at Community Park. So that's the scope of this project. So when you look real close, the skate park is the easiest of the 10 fields. There's only two lights on each pole, very light, and it's only 40 feet high. But if you fast-forward CP2, which is one of the baseball fields, you can see that there's eight on that pole, and that, there's a Musco, you know, hollow, and then two Musco boxes down there. Basically, power comes up from the street, and you have power going to the lights up top. As a close-up, when this work was done in 2021, you could see that the two rows are about six feet high, so that's about the height of the work, the technician working there. This is the base, the large baseball field. This is the, has eight poles. Two of the poles have 15 lights, so it's a very comprehensive project here. I will talk a little bit about the budget. So the project is coming in is $1,050,000. We have a $1 million grant that was awarded in October of 2024 from the DCED, which is the Department of Community and Economic Development, covered. Now, the 50, the other 50,000 may get covered by a PICO Green Region grant. So we've applied for it. We've been very good partners with them. It may happen. If it doesn't happen, that $50,000 has to come out of capital, but I would make the argument that, excuse me, if you look at the five-year projection that we had in 2024 for this project, it was $1.5 million, okay? By doing everything now, that 50,000 By doing everything now, that 50 grand basically saves us 1.5 million in future expenses. So it's, it's very beneficial for us, okay? We have, excuse me. The other thing is that this will reduce our operating costs by $15,000 a year, which in three years, it'll eat up that 50 grand if we have to pay for it. Both vendors in this project, we've worked with before. Musco did our lights at Twin Oaks Park in 2020, well, they've done all our lights, but we went LED lighting in 2021 at Twin Oaks, and we did 2024 at Versithia. And then this year, we're all good. Armour has done all those installations. So both are co-stars, we have a good team. We were very good in that we worked together in these other two projects, that we get together and said, I have a million-dollar grant, can we slap all 10? So we really worked hard together, and that's why we're benefiting now. So I will, to the, if the board approves tonight, excuse me, if the board approves tonight, we will do the install in July and August of this year. It's a good thing because most of the organized sports are in their downturn. We do have our summer at camp, but we can work around that because we don't really use the fields that much, okay? To the delight of my coworkers in the back, I will stop talking. My formal presentation asks the board if they have any questions for me.
This is an awesome project, Mr. Kupera. I'm personally very excited about it. Conversion to LED for the fields is fantastic, and I mean, the best part about it is the million-dollar grant that you were able to achieve, which is going to fund almost all of it. So great work. Any board members have questions for Mr. Kupera?
I was just wondering, when, when will we know if we got the PICO grant?
Don't know, sometime during the year. This is that special, they, it's their 20th anniversary or some special thing. So they, we did get $10,000 for the solar roofing at the barn, and they did say, just apply again, and you know, we'll know sometime this year.
Did you say the original was 1.5 million?
The projection that we have in the five-year look forward in 2024 did do that, because we never thought we could do all of the fields at one time. So we had, we budgeted for doing the quad one year, doing two soccer fields the next year, three was two. So doing all that, you got to mobilize and everything else like that. The benefit of this is that the 80-foot crane shows up, they have one big dumpster, they have one big gang box for tools, and they, they mobilize and do everything one-shot, one-location. So that's the benefit.
Thank you. And just to be clear, you said you're projecting a savings of $15,000 a year for operating costs, is that correct? So within three years, we would just about make up that?
That is correct.
$50,000.
Does the change to LED impact any of the local residents? Will it be brighter?
It's actually much better because the new lighting system is much targeted. So what we found out in Twin Oaks Park, for example, they schedule, they say 20-foot candles inside the fence, on the outfield fence, and then two feet later, it's two feet, two-foot candles just outside the fence. So it's very targeted, and it's actually better. There's less ambient light, if you will.
Any more questions? If not, I can accept the motion.
I moved, I make a motion to execute a contract for the purchase of LED lighting structures from Musco Sports Lighting in the amount of $710,000, and a contract with Armour &amp; Sons Electric for the installation of retrofitting 10 fields of Community Park for a total project of $1,050,000.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Kupera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next on the agenda, we have consideration of authorizing the advertisement of the 2025 road program bid. Mr. Kessler, you handling this one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Keecak. Bellboard members, before you tonight is this year's road program. We'd like to move into the bidding phase for that. To give you an overview of what this year's program has included is the milling and overlay, as well as some repairs in the roadway for North Flowers Mill Road, just outside the building here between Maple and Langhorne Yardley Road, as well as on Big Oak Road between Township Line and approximately 1,400 feet west of that. That's an area that was not done a few years back when some of Big Oak Road was resurfaced. And then we also have included an alternate with the bid for Erica Drive, so that one road loop for that neighborhood. The budget for this year's road program is 500,000, so we're hopeful to get favorable bid pricing where we can do all three of those pieces. If not, the base bid would be North Flowers Mill Road and that portion of Big Oak Road, and Erica Drive would be considered, depending on the pricing that we receive. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are those the two? How did you come to conclusion of getting, doing these two? Are they the most of, at need right now?
Each year, we take a look at kind of an overall assessment. We have lists of roads that, you know, are in need of repair. Big Oak is definitely one of those that's, you know, visibly tough to drive on at times, so that's been on a high priority list. North Flowers Mill, similar, it's, it's starting to deteriorate. We did South Flowers Mill last year, if you recall, so this will be kind of finishing that stretch with North Flowers. In addition to that, as we move forward, the assessment of the roads, now we have more of that technology, we'll kind of be able to have more of a further outlook with some rankings. But for this year, we, we know that these are in need, and they also are able to fit within the, the budgeted amount for 2025.
Other questions for Mr. Kessler? All right, I can accept a motion.
I make a motion to authorize the advertisement to solicit bids for the Township's 2025 road program.
Thanks, Ms. Keane. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Ms. Corporal. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Kessler.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, consideration of authorizing a contract with Concepts and Concrete for the replacement of the floor of the North Station. Mr. Gartner.
Good evening, board members. What you see in front of you tonight is one of the buildings that the township does own. We maintain certain parts of that building. This has been going on for the last couple of years, and finally, we did allocate some funding through RDA for this project, and that's why it's before you tonight. There were several bids, we had several contractors that had come in and give us pricing. The one that we're recommending is a co-star vendor. The other ones were not, but we still got pricing anyway to see where everything was going to fall into place. And so with that recommendation, we are asking what you have in front of you tonight.
So, and we're talking about the, the North Station, the fire station on Langhorne Yardley Road, and this is, what's going on with the floor there that this project?
So the, the last couple of years, actually since COVID, kind of, it, it's been flaking off. The one side's worse than the other side, the ambulance side. They came to us many times with meetings with Stephanie and Nick about repairs to that building that needed to be made. We took all those concerns, and we feel the floor is the most hazardous, to say, and that's why we chose to do that.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gartner?
How long do you think this project will take?
Once it's executed, the next steps are picking the colors out for the floor, and then logistically going with the ambulances. They're going to do one side at a time, so the ambulance side would be done first. Everything needs to get moved out of that bay, apparatus needs to be moved, and then same as for the firehouse side. Soon as the weather breaks a little bit, they can start on it. You're probably looking maybe another two to three months that they could start. Once we pick out the colors and everything, they order everything, and then it's just a go from there.
Other questions?
So you had mentioned the RDA grant, so how much of the funding is coming from the RDA grant?
So the RDA gave us $46,939 towards this project. The balance of that will come out of the firehouse amount, which is the firehouse fund that the township holds.
And I know there are a couple of projects on the list. What makes the floor the one that's necessary?
That one there is, they're, they're using it every day. They're driving on it, people are walking on it. If you ever get a chance, I can, I can take you up and show you. It's kind of a hazard, it really is. And they dealt with it for a while now, to be honest with you.
How long will the floor last?
With this floor we're going with, it should last at least 15 years. You know, the fire, or the ambulance side has less heavy equipment on it, per se, easy way to put it. The fire trucks are heavy, obviously. So, but the average is around 15 years, 12 to 15 years.
Thank you.
Any other questions, or I can accept a motion?
I move to authorize the purchase of 4,840 square feet of the quartz epoxy flooring system to include installation from Concepts and Concrete in Bristol, PA, for the amount of $59,629.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Gartner.
Thank you very much.
What color are you going to pick?
I still have to have meetings with the, we can do a couple of different colors.
Pretty invested in this decision, so.
I do have the color chart with me if you want to see it afterwards.
All right, next on the agenda, consideration of hiring consultant Roseanne McGrath to assist with the recruitment of Township Manager. As I think everyone knows now, sadly, Stephanie Teoli-Cools, our Township Manager, is leaving us in a few months, moving on to the next phase of her career, and so we need to begin the process of replacing her. And so what we are considering tonight is hiring a consultant, an outside consultant, to assist us with a formal recruiting process. So Ms. Teoli-Cools, do you want to just explain the proposal and the process?
Absolutely, thank you very much. So the board has asked me to look into a recommendation for how we might move through the recruitment process. I did a review of both regional and national recruitment firms, and it's my recommendation that the board consider hiring Roseanne McGrath from McGrath Consulting. Roseanne has an extensive background in HR and recruitment. She is, was the longtime HR Director at Lower Marion Township, which is a very large municipality, like 600 employees. When she retired, she started this consulting business, and so the recommendation is to hire Roseanne. It will be a collaborative process where I will be helping with the administrative aspects behind the scenes, and Roseanne will really be digging in when the resumes are received and the recruitment moves to interviews and, and offer. So at this point, we would recommend that the recruitment process include the posting of the advertisement and the brochure for the position on Monday, March 17th. So a week from now, the posting would be ready to go live. In fact, we might get it up later this week, potentially. We're looking at a 30-day review. We're going to post that the position is open until filled, and we'll have a first review of applicants on April 15th. And then at that point, the board would move into the process of doing interviews. I have announced and worked with the board. I announced in January I was leaving, May is going to be my last meeting, and I will be transitioning out shortly thereafter. In order to provide a smooth transition, the recommendation is also that we consider appointing Nick Vallah, our Assistant Township Manager, to step in as the interim manager beginning mid-May. And so Nick would be holding down the fort while you wrap up the process. We will be considering internal as well as external candidates through the process. And the goal would be that your first opportunity to appoint your new Township Manager would be at the June meeting. So June or July, based upon the candidate. And yeah, I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions, but again, it's going to be collaborative in-house with the use of Roseanne McGrath. She has great references. We've worked with her already with our HR team, so I feel very confident in making the recommendation to you.
And just two points I would make. One is that by utilizing Ms. Teoli-Cools to help with some of the administrative aspects of the recruitment process, we're able to keep costs down, and I think the recruiting cost and Ms. McGrath's services will be significantly less than they would be if we had to hire her to do the whole process from beginning to end. So that is appreciative, because that will save, obviously, the residents money. The other thing is, just to clarify, while you'll be assisting with administrative aspects, you won't actually be participating in the, the interviews or the selection process of your eventual replacement, correct?
Correct. And I feel very strongly, as the board knows, that I should step out of the process when it gets to the actual interviews. So I'll be assisting Roseanne with any logistical aspects, but not sitting in on the interview process. So the board will have the opportunity to vet the candidates. The candidates will be open and not uncomfortable with the presence of the outgoing manager in the interviews. So I think it should, I think it should be a good process.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from any board members about this process? All right, well, then I will move to authorize hiring consultant Roseanne McGrath to assist with the recruitment of a new Township Manager. Is there a second?
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Teoli-Cools. And that brings us to public comment. This is public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Yep, let's go up to the microphone to state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Beth Pollock. I live in Middletown Township, and I am very glad to be here. The reason I want to talk to all of you is because of the proposed development Woodburn Ridge. I think it's like 1700 Woodburn Road by the Westrum Development Company of Fort Washington. Now, over the, over the short while, you know, I volunteered at the food pantry, the ERA food pantry in back of the old Eisenhower School. And I would walk there and get a ride home. And towards the end of the year and a half, I would walk to Walgreens near H Mart, and then I'd walk up Woodburn Road, and I would cut across the big expanse of green lawn in front of the school. And I'll tell you something, I've come to the conclusion that that property is sacred ground. I mean, it's, it's like an open space in the middle of Levittown, and there's trees on that property that are probably as, as old as Levittown itself. And I've come to the conclusion that, you know, I was at this meeting, I forget when, and you guys voted for Woodburn Ridge. Do any of you live in Levittown by any chance? Any of you? You do? Where, you live in Levittown? Did you vote for it? Well, let me tell you something, I don't, I don't understand, I think the only reason, the only good it would do, and I mean it, is it would give you tax revenue, but I think it would be so demoralizing. And I think, do you know if Westrum Development is still going ahead with their plans to build it? Like, have you been in touch with Westrum Development lately?
Mr. Esposito, do you have an update on status of that project?
They're still moving through the process. They're getting their outside approvals from PennDOT, and Mr. Kessler might have more of that, but he, they got to submit still for final review, and the plans haven't been signed and recorded yet.
When you say PennDOT, you mean for the lane near Cobalt Ridge that's going to be another?
All of that, that, that lane, as well as the
You know
Traffic improvements in front on Woodburn Road.
Why are you, do you approve something that's going to be so awful? Do you realize, do you know, like, I know somebody who lives right near Woodburn Road. The traffic there is horrendous already. The traffic is going to be more The traffic is going to be more traffic. And, and also, I've spoken to somebody. They're saying that, that the last several years, they drove on, on River Road, right next to the Delaware River in the summer. And, and the, and the, and the water level was very, very low, you know? And also, I mean, I just spoke to this person briefly, but it seems lately with climate change and everything, you know, suppose there's not sufficient water for the 70 homes of Woodburn Road, of Woodburn Ridge, let alone the Knights of Columbus, 34 homes. But I want to tell you something. I have an idea. And, and I tell you, this Woodburn Ridge would be very demoralizing to Levittown. It really would. And I have this idea. I really feel, no matter what the plans are, I think that area should be designated as open space. And I don't know how, how it could be afforded, but I could always work on it. And I'll tell you another thing, that Eisenhower School, you know, sure, it's not in the best of shape. But let me tell you something. The, I mean, I haven't been to the ERA food pantry. I haven't volunteered since, I think, June or July. But it's sufficient for that food pantry. And another thing is, it's a great, it's a great location for the food pantry. It has big rooms that were once classrooms that hold all the food. And there's a big parking lot in the back. And the cars just line up, and they, one by one, they wait for their food. And sometimes when I used to go there, you should see the line of cars that would extend past the gate. And how are they going to find another, you know, that ERA food pantry is very important. Well, listen to my idea. And I think this really would be a shot in the arm for Levittown. And I feel that, that area, that property in front of the Eisenhower School is at, I believe, 1700 Woodburn Road. I feel that would be a wonderful location for a 4th of July birthday bash. And I was even thinking, there could be an ad in the Courier Times that said, "Have a blast, have a blast at the Levittown birthday bash, July 4th, 2026." And you know how with the federal government, they have, right now, they have Project 2025? Well, this would be Project 2026. And it would be a birthday bash, and I would plan it. And it would be for all the people of Levittown. I mean, you know, Levittown, like, I take the bus, you know, the 120 or the 129, you know, to go to Walmart or Bristol. And the bus goes on roads right past, you know, different sections. I mean, Levittown is in really bad shape. And I really, and, and I would be the DJ. And I'm not kidding. And, and I think it would be a wonderful, I think Levittown would love it. And then also, there's, there would be plenty of parking at the Walmart parking lot. So, they could park their cars at the Walmart parking lot, and then they could have local school buses. Take people from the Walmart parking lot to, to, to the 1700 Woodburn Road. But then, if some people wanted to come on their motorcycles, they could probably, there'd probably be enough room for them.
All right, ma'am. Well, I'm, I appreciate your ideas and the sentiment. Middletown doesn't own that property. We would not have the right to host any event on that property.
Okay, who owns it?
It's, it's already, it's, it's private property. It's, it's not, it's not, and it's already gone.
The thing is, you, but you guys voted for this.
You, I think you misunderstand what our role is. It's a, a, a private property that somebody wants to sell and somebody else wants to buy. And a new developer is purchasing the property, and they presented plans to us for approval. And it's gone through that process already, and we've already voted to approve it. So, that's already happened.
Well, do you know when, when they were going to start breaking ground for it?
I don't. Mr. Esposito just gave, he said they're still waiting for PennDOT approval, so that's.
But don't, why did you approve it? It's going to be so bad for Levittown. You know, the thing is, I'll tell you something. This, this municipal center is in Langhorne. And you know, I really feel like you guys are totally removed from any situation, any, any problems going on in Levittown. It's like you're oblivious to it. No, really. Do you know the poverty? I mean, I go by on the bus, and some of these houses are just dilapidated, you know? And, 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 and if there was a birthday bash, do you know there would be a shot in the arm? I mean, why are you approving a, why did you approve it when the traffic would be horrendous? Maybe there, because the water level may be low in the summer, there may not even be enough water to flush the toilet.
Yeah, I'm just, we, we already had this issue at a public meeting, and we took lots of public comment.
Where do you live, Mike?
I, we, this issue has already been resolved. So, I, I just, I'm not gonna.
Okay, well, I'm.
I appreciate your, your concern. And I, and I know you've been here before, and I'm, and I understand your, your feelings about the project. But unfortunately, that's already been voted on. And so, there's, we can't go back on that.
All right. I have one more que, I, I have another idea. You know the new apartments at the Oxford Valley Mall? Do you know if they're having problems getting tenants? Because it's very big. And I have an idea that, you know, it's quite a few apartments. And, you know, sometimes I walk by, and I'll, I have to say, it seems like the, the, the construction, it seems like a very quality job. And I have this idea that I'd like to share. That if they are having problems getting tenants, and I have a feeling they may be, that, that apartment complex could be like a mini United Nations. And I don't know how to do it. Maybe I should contact, it's called Atlee Square.
Yeah, I just, I'm just going to stop you again for a second. The Township doesn't own that. And we don't have the right to tell anybody what they can or can't do with it. I mean, that's, that's owned by a developer, and they're leasing the apartment. So, I, we, we can't.
So, in other words, contact Atlee Square.
I guess, if you haven't.
Would you like to just, I'll just say, what they could do is if they could find, somehow find, like, people for, like, new immigrants, you know, that work very, very hard, like, maybe New York City or Philadelphia. I'm, I'm sure a lot of foreign people, you know, that are working very hard, maybe they just came to this country. If they knew of this quality apartment complex in, in Bucks County, I think they would, they, they'd really welcome going there because it has a lot of attributes. And this is, maybe what I should do is contact Atlee Square. Because I, I really, I think it would, it would breathe a lot of life into Atlee Square. And I think the people, you know, it would be, really, I'm not trying to repeat myself, but it could be like a mini United Nations. I'll sit down now.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Jonas Johnson. I did submit a email.
Sorry, can you speak up a little bit? I'm having a trouble hearing you. Maybe move the microphone closer.
My name is, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, just keep your voice up if you can.
My name is Jonas Johnson. I did submit a public comment email. And actually, I'm disappointed about the 70 townhouses that are going into the Eisenhower. But I'm really disappointed in approving the zoning, that there are going to be 34 more townhouses at the Knights and Knights of Columbus. And the thing is, it's terrible, the traffic there. I mean, it's, you have gridlock at times. I mean, sometimes it's okay. But the traffic is really tr, you know, you can't even make a left-hand turn onto Woodburn Road from Oxford Valley Road because they're actually lying from Trenton Road all the way to the intersection at Trenton. And, no, the intersection of Woodburn and Oxford Valley Road. Also, that, we went to get pizza on Saturday, and actually, we were going up Oxford Valley Road. And in between Woodburn Road and Trenton Road, it was like three-quarter, the whole street there, it was three-quarter full of cars. I don't know where they were coming from. It's not usually like that. And it's really a bad thing, even on the other way, going on Woodburn Road towards New Falls Road. Sometimes, I, I've already waited three traffic light signals before I could get across. Yeah. Trying to think of the road, New Falls Road. And that's the only thing. I'm just disappointed that you're actually putting 34 more houses actually there, when it's already crowded. And both of these sections are, they're hardly, they're right by each other. So, it's, I'm just showing, showing my disappointment.
Would you mind if I just said one, say one more thing?
Sure.
I'll say, I'll say, I'll tell you, I'm, you guys seem like you have no feelings about what's going on. Let me tell you something. When, when are you guys, I'm not, the next time there's an election for Board of Supervisors, I'm not voting for any of you, okay? I hope new people come in that have a heart, that aren't just like robots, thinking, oh, well, this was approved and that. I'm just telling you, I'm, I hope, especially you, Mike, you know, I, I'm, I'm not going to vote for any of you guys. And I really hope they have a whole new Board of Supervisors. Because you people, you really, you don't, you don't care about Levittown. I, I think, I think you're just oblivious to Levittown, okay? So, I'm not voting for you, and I hope, I hope most, you know, I'll look into it. But I hope, I hope we get new people. I hope you guys don't, don't get elected next time. Thank you.
Any other public comment on non-agenda items? This man, please state your name and address.
Hi. My name is Jean Johnson, and I lived, that's my husband who just spoke. And when I realized what was going on, I'm busy and I don't have time to keep up with it. I couldn't believe that 104 more homes were going to come in this area. Like my husband said, there's so many, there's so much traffic now. You have to wait a long time. You're backed up. It's bringing down our area. We have lived there for 48 years. The traffic has tripled in those years. And with these homes here, I can't even imagine it. I can't. Because the Oxford Valley and Woodburn Road intersect there, and that's where they're all going to come into. And it's, it's already a busy intersection. It's bad. It shouldn't have ever been approved. It's not going to do any good for the residents. And in the summer, the summers have been dry, and you don't know what the summer is going to bring. You don't know. If we have a drought, and we're told, oh, well, don't be flushing your toilets. Flush it once a day, and do one load a wash a week. See how you're going to like it then. You're not going to like it. When, the planning is not there. And I called the Water Authority, and they told me they didn't have any plans submitted for this building. So, they haven't agreed to it, and it hasn't gone through. That's what they told me. But like my husband said, I don't know why it even would go through. You're wrecking Levittown. We moved in Levittown that wasn't what it is today. Today, it's, it's still a very nice place. The children grew up, and they bought homes there, and it's nice. But any more people, you're wrecking it. It's getting to be a Philadelphia. Too many people. The roads aren't built for the cars. We don't have the water supply. Well, right now, we do, but we could run low, and it's going to be a problem. It really is. And I would like to move if it goes, if it happens. I probably won't, but I think I, I would. I would almost like to move now. It's, Levittown has been a changed place for the worst. Have to look out for Levittown. People, it's good people there. Good hard work, working people have lived here for years. Their children grow up, grow up, and they stay there. And they want it to stay the same. And I'm kind of appalled that they don't come out and speak about it. I took a petition yesterday. I didn't have it very long. I got 19 names in here. Not one is for it. Not one. That's indicative of how the other people would feel too. You're not representing the people. She's right. You're not. You're not representing us. We do not want it. It's a nightmare for us. It really is. It makes us want to move. Our, our government should look out for us. Our supervisors should look out for our interests and what we want. I don't know why the apathy of people, they don't come up and speak out to you. They need to speak out to you. They do. And you say the plan's already planned. Well, what do we say? Our goose is cooked? Or what do we say? We don't like it there. We don't like this happening. It's going to be a nightmare for us. I live on Apple Street, right behind Queen of the Universe. It's a beautiful area. But it's changing. It's too much traffic. So, if you can change it anyway, you know, turn it back, that'd be great. Because that's what, that's what the people want. Like you say, if you want this petition, I have 19 names. Everybody's against it. And I, I got this in a short period of time. Everybody verbally I talked, there's nobody for it. Nobody. So, it shouldn't have passed. It shouldn't have. The people don't want it.
So, can I just say, I, I grew up, I lived in Langhorne when I was in high school. And I, I understand. The neighborhoods are different. And there's lots more development. There's lots of things that are completely different than, you know, 40 years ago. I understand that.
Right.
And I understand that people are concerned about traffic and concerned about, you know, things getting more populated. But unfortunately, that's what's happening, not only here, but everywhere. As the population's growing, people need housing. And there's a demand there. And if people, if people, this is privately owned property. We're very limited on what we can do with that. So, the builder comes in. As you know, we denied a property on Woodburn Road by the railroad, and we were going to get sued for that, which would have cost the, the residents thou, hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe more. So, we have to do what's physically responsible as well. And we have to know that we're limited on what we can do. We can make the, we can try to get the best project that we can, and we always do that. We try to make sure that we have stormwater, water control, that they are looking at what's going on with traffic, and putting the best interest. So, I think it's, I understand where you're coming from. I mean, I live in Levittown. We have people that do live in Levittown here. So, we understand. We're driving on these roads. We understand where you're coming from. We're always thinking about those things as well. But we are limited on what we can do. And we don't always have that luxury of saying no. It's, it's easy to come out, and we appreciate you guys coming out and giving us feedback. But I want you to know, it's not that we're just sitting here shaking our heads going, well, you know, you know, we don't care. We do care. But there are certain things that we have to follow regulations, and, and we have to follow what, what, you know, the zoning is. And if it's coming in, it's a private property. So, they have the right to sell it, and they have a right to profit from it.
Right. But don't you have a right to say how many people, the population of Levittown is? Because when Levitt built it, he built it with initial amount of homes. And with every development, every section, he put in a park, and he put in a public school. Now, it doesn't seem to me like the population's getting bigger. They just want to all move to Bucks County. We can't take, take the world because we're only Bucks County. We could say, we don't have any room here. Move to a different area. Move up to North Pennsylvania. There's a lot of land up there.
I understand that. And they're having the same concerns I know in Upper Box and other places. If you look in the Poconos, like, it, this is spreading out. And I understand, you know? You know, when Levitt was built, and 50 years ago, you know, 30 years ago, 40 years ago, all these new developments are coming, and I'm sure neighbors all thought the same thing. And I understand where you're coming from. We definitely, I think we all understand.
I'm glad to hear that.
And we really do try to limit and try to work with the builders and try to do whatever we can to make sure that the residents are, are, you know, their needs are being addressed.
But when they have a school property, that's, that Eisenhower School is on a big property. You could put a lot of homes in there. You could say, we don't want more traffic here. So, it could be an office building where you come and you go. Or maybe take the Eisenhower School itself and make apartments out of that. It wouldn't be 80 apartments. It could be maybe 40 apartments. That would limit the traffic.
We understand that. Unfortunately, number one, office buildings aren't selling right now anywhere. And that's a problem that everybody's having, and we don't want empty buildings around. Number two, that, when builders come in, let's face it, they want to make a profit.
Right.
So, they're going to try to make as much profit as they can. We try to get them down to say, nope, we're, we need, we don't want you to cut this. We want, we don't want this many buildings. We don't want this many units. So, we do our best to cut that down and to make sure that they're looking at the traffic concerns.
Well, that's what we want. We want you to look out for us. We don't want, but the thing is, we just don't want any more homes there. It's bad the way it is. It's, that's what they got to know. We can't afford to have any, any, any more traffic on those roads. Those roads weren't built for more cars. They weren't built for. Then let these homes that they're going to go up, let them pay for wider roads and better roads. Let them pay for it. And bring in the water pipes and the sewer pipes to accommodate the more sewage and water that they need. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
Good evening, Board. Lance Seggers, 98, Queen Lily. First, Mike, I just wanted to discuss, and I appreciate your comments last meeting. But just so that you knew, that these aren't my thoughts. I did on a Residents of Middletown forum, discussed the last meeting, and asked for people to give their opinion on building. And out of 155 comments, after weeding. weeding out about 10 that didn't really address specifically the topic, there was probably about two people that were for building, and about 143 that expressed opinions of stop building. So, well, I appreciate these folks for coming out tonight and talking about the overdevelopment. I did want to address Ms. Corporal's comments about you guys being limited, and you guys doing the best that you can. And I disagree with that. And I think a lot of residents disagree with that. I'm going to point to the last meeting that we had. This board literally changed a professional zoning district that affected, I think, six or seven parcels of land that you didn't have to change. You could have just told Knights of Columbus, figure it out. It's a professionally zoned, figure out how to manage that property with the current zoning. But you didn't. You opened the door to more high-density housing. I think that the community as a whole is getting tired of those things. As far as limiting building, I watched this board approve variance after variance after variance from developers, that in my opinion, you don't have to build. Have the builders build with the current codes, with the current ordinances in place. Okay? And if that's by right, or, or by land, whatever the code is, then let them build single-family homes. I discussed it at the, at a different committee where, hey, if they want to build single-family, okay, they may only make a million dollars. All right? But it's still a profit. It's not showing any kind of inability to make money. But we don't have to allow builders to come in and ruin a community with congestion, and make 30-something million that doesn't go back to the community. So I think there's a lot more. And I feel like the community, from, you know, the feedback that I get feels like the board can be doing a lot more, but you don't. So that brings me to a lot of the things that I will just speak to the community, because I don't know if I'm going to change some of the board members' minds on this board right now, is just look at the previous votes that we've had on land use. And I go back to all the variances, the changing of professional zones, the changes of other zones, so that we can, you know, roll out the red carpet to developers. If you're in this community and your commute has gotten worse, all right, these aren't national issues. These are local issues. If your commute has gotten worse, it's costing you more money to get around. Okay? If you've gone to your doctor, and you can't get an appointment for your doctor for two or three months, when you used to be able to get an appointment pretty quickly. Or when you go to your doctor, your appointment's at 2:00, but you're waiting around for an hour, an hour and a half. Those are service issues, because we've added to the population. And I'm not cold-hearted. I understand that we need affordable housing. But I think there's a difference in framing, hey, do we need affordable housing, or do we ruin our community to usher in affordable housing? I think affordable housing can go where it's capable of not overwhelming a community, and ruining the community that we're in. And I think that's the question that we have for ourselves. I think you'd ask a lot of people, including myself, do we need houses that are affordable? Yes. But not at the expense of what we already have, and at the current taxpayers. Who, by the way, are telling the board, and have been telling the board, a lot of people, that we don't want this. So tho, those are just a couple of my comments. What I would tell these folks, there's two board positions open in a couple of months. I would hope they use their vote wisely. I certainly will be. And I hope the board, God forbid you guys get reelected, I hope you guys would consider the other side of the argument, because it doesn't seem like, based on the votes, that you guys are listening. You guys are doing, knowing what you feel like is, is best for their community, and not what the community wants, not what they're electing you to do. Thank you, Board.
Any other public comment on non-agenda items? All right, seeing none, that brings us to other business. I'll start with Mr. Kessler.
Thank you.
Mr. Valla.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Esposito.
I just want to announce that the board did hold an executive session directly prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel matters. Nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tealley-Coolz.
I would just like to congratulate newly sworn-in Lieutenant Zach Brochus in the back of the room, sworn in this morning as our most recent lieutenant.
Congratulations, Lieutenant. All right, Ms. Kane.
Yeah.
Ms. Kane?
Nothing further.
Ms. Hannah?
I wanted to say welcome Officer Miller, Miller. Congratulations, and thank you to Mr. McCool for his service. And I also wanted to mention Community Cleanup Day is on April 5th, correct? And make sure you go online and sign up for your, for the different areas. I know that we do it every year in my development, in my section of Levittown. And there's also something for Earth Day. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Ms. Corporal?
Nothing.
Ms. Strauss?
Nothing, thank you.
And I have nothing, so I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.